What?
I didn't make it to the bakery. You gotta go.
Was Kath impressed?
What?
Uh, were you at home?
All right, I will, um, call the meeting of the Rock Ridge to order. Um, it's six o'clock. On with, um, electronic devices, if you could place those on silent or turn them off, this, that would be much appreciated. There's a binder, um, with the public materials at the door coming into the room. It's also available online for those who are interested. Um, and that would be accessed by going to RRPS.org under the tab District Information Board and Board Book. At this time, I invite everyone to stand, um, for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Right, at this time, I will conduct roll call. Director Yohan?
Here.
Director Schoburg?
Here.
Director Tamaro?
Yes.
Director Addy?
Here.
Director Reardon?
You.
Director Anderson?
Here.
Director Sumquist is here, um, Director Sorkin?
Yes, here.
And Director Lotiger is unavailable tonight. At this time, I will administer the oath of office for the appointed board director, Murray Anderson. Director Anderson, if you will, stand and raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Murray Anderson,
I, Murray Anderson.
swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support, I swear to support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And that I will discharge faithfully.
And I will discharge faithfully.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
School board member.
Of school board member.
Of independent school district number 2909.
Of school district 2909.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and abilities.
Welcome back. At this time, I will ask for a, um, if anyone has anything to be added or removed from the agenda. I will ask for a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented.
FOMO agreement for paper.
Motion by Director Reardon, support by Director Anderson. Any discussion? All right, Director Sorkin?
Aye.
Director Yohan?
Yes.
Director Schoburg?
Aye.
Director Tamaro? Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Reardon?
Yes.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Sumquist is a yes, motion passes eight zero. At this point, um, are there any visitors? And was there any comments online?
No.
Okay, no visitor input at this point. Agenda item number five is the audit report. Mr. Knutson is online.
Hi, this is, this is Spencer, could I just update the board on a couple of things before we get to Mr. Knutson? If that's fine?
That's fine with me.
Just a, just a few things, uh, one, I, I came on the, on the meeting last time, talked about the budget. Um, we continue to work on the 2122 budget. Um, um, before we start setting up our admin meetings here in February to get working on it. I just wanted to let you know about a very promising development, um, on the estimated, um, federal stimulus dollars that we may be receiving, um, for the school year. Uh, we haven't heard all the rules on it or what the timelines will be for spending those dollars. But the latest estimate that we did hear was about $2.3 million for Rock Ridge schools. Um, so that's really good news. Um, like I said, we don't know exactly the parameters of that, but I did want to share with the, with you all the estimates that we're hearing right now from the latest stimulus package. So that's the first thing, um, the second thing is I did hear, um, there may be some questions from some board members regarding statutory guidelines and health insurance. So I just wanted to update everyone that, um, we will be going out for health insurance, RFPs towards the end of March. This is something that we're obligated to do every two years through the, um, Health Insurance Transparency, Transparency Act. Um, so it is state law and we do that every two years. And just so you know, we're also, um, we have our insurance, insurance agent for liability and workers comp. Um, they go out every year and search for different, um, rates through different companies. So I want to update you guys on that as that will affect the budget. And then also just the last thing is, um, there are some questions about if our students do any of the construction on the project this coming fall, um, like the concession stand or things like that. Um, I did check with our insurance company and as long as it's, um, an extension of our classroom, um, all the students are covered and the district is covered on any projects that our students would do kind of as an extension of the classroom. So just wanted to update you guys on that, uh, real quick before we turn it over to Mr. Knutson and our audits from last year.
Spencer, I have a question. So the health insurance, I think that's, yeah, you said it's statutory every two years, but the liability insurance, does that follow the same, um, guidelines as every so many years or is it five years or what?
Um, there's not a, there's not a statutory guideline on that, but we do every year, um, have our agent shop around to get the best rates from different insurance companies.
And, um, on that though, that, um, every so many years, I know in Evolith Gilbert, we had the same agent for many, many years, but then we went out for RFPs for different agents for, uh, competition. And I wondered if there's anything statutory about doing that also.
Uh, I don't believe there's anything statutory, but it is a good idea to do that every few years just to make sure that everybody is, is, uh, getting a fair shot and everybody's honest with their, their rate. So I think that's, that's something that we should do with, with all things that we do.
Yeah, and especially now that we're a new district, where two old districts have gone away. We are a new entity, we probably should do that, I would suggest.
All right, thank you, Spencer.
You're welcome.
Mr. Knutson, the show is yours.
Okay, thank you, good evening, everybody.
Thanks.
I did, I did, I don't, um, I'm not the greatest at the Zoom, which is, I sent out a 15-page handout, um, to everybody, I don't know if that's available or do I have to share my screen? Or how we do this?
It was part, part of the board packet, so everybody should have it on their iPad.
Okay, so all I could do is just refer to the page and go with it.
That would work just fine.
I would suggest for the public though, that if you could share your page as you go by, that would be helpful for the public.
Director Sorkin, all that information is available online and just for ease of going through the report, uh, I think we'll allow Mr. Knutson the, uh, ability to go through and refer, reference the pages.
I know, but we do that for our construction thing, we give their PowerPoint and their pages, um, so.
Go ahead, Mr. Knutson.
Okay, so I can see it, the cover page just talks about, has both, um, ISD 706 and 2154. And it's the year ended June 30th, 2020 on both of them. Turning to page one, and this is the, um, opinion from Virginia. And that refers to, um, in our opinion, the financial statement referred to above presents fairly in all material respects the financial position of the governmental activities, each major fund in the aggregate, remaining fund information, um, for, at June 30th and the year end. And there is an emphasis of manner paragraph, which as you're aware, basically saying that the, um, the district 706 passed a resolution to consolidate with ISD 2154, Evolith Gilbert perform ISD 2909 effective July 1st, 2020. And our opinion is not modified to that matter, that's on page one. On page two is the Evolith Gilbert opinion. And we do have a qualified opinion on that for government-wide, and that has to do with GAZB 75 OPEB. And the district had not a, a recent actual actuarial valuation of the net OPEB assets liabilities as required by GAZB 75. And the information was just being updated, um, based on the prior, um, act, an old actuarial. And also, as you see in that, this is on page two, refers to GAZB 16. Part of that actuarial also has, um, severance payable calculation. And that's for accounting for compensated absences. And that number also was outdated, outdated because it didn't have a recent actuarial. So, um, you do have unmodified opinions as related to the governmental funds in the aggregate remaining fund information, but it's qualified because it's a government-wide, um, financial information. So, um, and we do, we will have, um, when I get to the finding going on later, the, I'm sure the intent is to have a updated, um, actuarial for the, for the new school board and the new school district. Turning to page three, what I, what I have here, and this is similar what you've probably seen before. I know, um, Spencer had information similar to this where we have the, this is the general fund only, general funds of 706, 2154 in the beginning fund balance. And, um, as you can see, the, um, Virginia had 5.3 million in their general fund. And, um, various fund balances were committed for construction, basically 2.5 million for the Rock Ridge High School. So we still have 5.3, but it's broken down differently, so you had, went from three point, just under 3.3 million to, um, just under 2 million as far as unassigned fund balances because of that commitment. There's also, was a couple area, other, other areas, the severance was, um, uncommitted for severance and committed for construction and also op cap, operating capital led to that 2.5 million. Moving to, um, 2154, the fund balance there, general fund is 4.4 million, 170,000. And 3 million was committed for the, um, Evolith Gilbert Elementary School. And 2.5 million came from the unassigned fund balances, so that went from 2.8 to 2.5 or 2.5 committed to, um, 340,000 and, um, 250,000 from Taconite, up 250,000 from, um, long-term facilities maintenance. And there's the 3 million there. And on the right on this is the, um, beginning July 1st, 2020, fund balance for the ISD 2909. So in total, the general fund has two, 9,514,000 with the various breakdowns. Um, page four on that same handout, and it's going to be a similar type thing, but it's, even though it says committed for, um, construction, there was really no commitment. This is the special revenue funds, the, um, food service at a fund balance in 706 of over 200,000 for, um, 706 and 134,000 in 2154. Ending, um, food service reserve for, um, just food service, just under 300,000. And there's a non-spendable fund balance of 41,000. And on the bottom of that, we have restricted for community ed, community services in all of various breakdowns with a total of 601,000 for the entire fund balance. So for special revenue funds, um, 248,000 came from ISD 706 and 352,000 from 2909 giving us just over 600,000 in, um, special revenue funds. Moving to page five, we get to some of the, uh, here's the debt service fund. Fund seven is regular debt, fund 47 is OPEB debt. You can see in total at 706, you had 162,000 fund balance, 65,000 in 2154 giving us an ending, our beginning fund balance in ISD 2909, 227. And there's a large restricted for building construction fund at 63020 and 71, which is not surprising because of the, um, debt issue and the amount that's still sitting in that building construction fund. Virginia had 140,574 fund balance at June 30th. 2154, Evolith Gilbert, 29,358. So it's an ending, it's 29 million, an ending fund balance of 169 million, just short of 170 million, which is basically committed for the new projects. And I do have total, all governmental funds, which are the special revenue debt, the building construction. And the general fund, um, 146,329 from ISD 706, 33,947. You can see the majority of that is sitting in building construction. And the ending, um, or beginning July 1st for 2909 of 180,276. Moving on to page seven, this is a snapshot of your debt as it was for both districts. You started the year at 8,586. You had two bond issues, um, 2019A and 2019, 136,355. And there also was bond premiums, unamortized from those bond issues, just, um, short of 180 million. Um, that is new debt and deductions had to do with paying off existing OPEB bonds and the, um, amortization of that bond premium, 1,400. So at, and, end of the year, you have 186,626,588 in total debt for the Rock Ridge schools. Turning to page eight, which, uh, keeping that 186,000 in mind, you can see the total project budget for, um, the construction commitments is 185,800, which is very close to that 186,000. And spent to date on the various schools, um, the new schools, the high schools.
Excuse me, though those numbers are million, not thousand, correct?
Right, right, thank you. 6,414. And I know, big numbers. The Virginia Elementary, 256 million. And the Evolith Elementary, 1,802. So total spent to date is 8,474,59. And the total project budget, as I mentioned before, is 185 million. Moving to page nine, we'll get to the findings. This is the Virginia district at 63020. We have the same segregation of duties, um, finding, you can read it there. Staffing limitation caused by fiscal constraints and, um, this is just, uh, officials and manager of the district should be aware of this condition, attempt to segregate as much as possible and provide oversight to partially compensate for this deficiency. Um, finding 202002 was lack of control of financial reporting. As part of the audit, management requested the audit prepare a draft of the district's financial statements, including the related notes, manager review to prove and accept the responsibility for these statements prior to the issuance. But management does not possess the technical expertise to comply with the GAZB reports. So this approved, but it's part, it's an inherent weakness to have us, um, prepare the financial statements and notes. And, page 10, Minnesota legal compliance collateral requirements. At condition, this is 202003, at June 30th, 2020, 1,181,779 of district deposits were not FDI insured or collateralized. So even though they were collateralized, um, um, per the bank, the, um, statute requires 10% more than the amount in excess of the uninsured portion. And this had to do a lot with, um, the high cash balances at year end. And recommendation management should monitor the district's deposits and obtain the proper amount of collateral from all of their financial institutes. Management agrees the findings and will monitor their bank balances and obtain the proper collateral from all the financial institutes. Moving to page 11 of this, there's only 14 pages. Um, 202004 segregation duties is the same one we talked about before, but this has to do because you're at a single audit, this had to do with federal work findings. It's exact one that you see earlier on the lack of segregation. Um, but this has to do with, um, specifically federal findings, 202004. Moving to page 12, this is the findings from the Evolith Gilbert School District. We have the same segregation of duties, 202001, same lack of control of financial reports, 202002. I'm not going to go over it unless somebody has a question. This gets back to what we talked about before, 202003, this is on page 13. The, um, actual valuation of the district's net OPEB liability asset is required by GAZB number 75. And this district did not have an actual valuation of their net OPEB liability slash asset as required by GAZB and the financial reporting for post-employment benefits. And this qualified the opinion because of the lack of a, um, timely actuarial. Management agrees the findings and will submit application information to the actuary in order to have an actuary evaluation for the OPEB liability and asset. And turning to the bottom of page 13, which is, continues to page 14, is unclaimed property. Minnesota statute required that unclaimed or uncashed checks held for more than three years or one year for unpaid compensation be paid or delivered to the state commissioner revenue unclaimed property. The district had outstanding checks in their bank account for more than three years old. And the district is not in compliance with the statute. Um, they're not, this, this occurred because the district did not review the unclaimed property, all the outstanding checks or pay or deliver to the state commission, commission of commerce. We recommend the district pay or deliver unclaimed to the state commissioner pursuant to the statute 3541. Management agrees the finding and will pay or deliver unclaimed property to the state commission pursuant pursuant to that statute. That's everything that I have in the, the handout. Any questions?
Greg, um, so were there any penalties for that GAZB thing? And I, have we submitted it? Are we going to submit it, any penalties for not submitting it?
None, none that I am aware of, but, um, it, it could be, um, I would recommend that you follow that, you're talking about basically that actuarial, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, none, none that I'm aware of, um, and I don't know who would be the enforcing agent, possibly the state department of education and the state auditor, but as far as I'm aware, there is no, there is no penalties or, um, um, anything else other than maybe a slap on the wrist. But if it continues, and usually that's a huge red flag, then I think there would be more likely something that, um, could happen.
Along those lines, Greg, is this the same thing that we had the qualified opinion for last year?
I don't believe so. Um, are you talking back at 2154?
Yes. I, I know we had a, it, a qualified opinion on, on one issue and just making sure that that's been corrected.
No, this, this is the same one. It's the same qualification, so this is, this is a couple of years running.
Doesn't it say it, we haven't submitted since 2016?
That, yeah, that was the last, um, um, actuarial, um, that was updated.
We're over four years delinquent.
I believe those are due every three years. Need to be renewed, and I have contacted the actuarial to get a new one for the entire Rock Ridge with both the old Virginia and old Evolith Gilbert, um, to get that actuarial updated now. So that is in process.
Oh, question, so because Evolith Gilbert didn't have that, um, actuarial report or those numbers, um, now that we're consolidated, how does that, does that affect the newly consolidated district? Because that was Evolith Gilbert's, uh, liability and responsibility going into consolidation? Or is it now just coming out of our combined pool of assets and funds?
It all gets, it all gets added in together to 2909 between the two. And they'll do a, a new actuarial to, um, to calculate what that is now.
Uh, but it will be, will it still carry over a separate amount for the Evolith Gilbert employees?
Um, they'll all, they'll carry over the old information from Evolith Gilbert, those that were a part of that. And the new Virginia, and they'll add it all up together to be one.
Okay, those responsibilities will not stay with, um, Evolith Gilbert ongoing. Now they'll be combined like some of the other things, that will just be responsibilities of separate districts coming into consolidation, that will not, these OPEB reserves?
Um, I understand that it becomes Rock Ridge, uh, unless I understand that incorrectly, Mr. Knutson.
That, that's my understanding of it too.
Thank you, Mr. Knutson.
I have a question, cup or two for Mr. Knutson. Um, Greg, on your page three, um, when I come, when, uh, the full audits, um, those numbers seem to coincide with pages where the Evolith Gilbert, and I just concentrated on the Evolith Gilbert side. Pages 18 and page 20 were about the, um, um, the general fund is for last year. And I just, I'd just like to understand a little, a little more closely some of these numbers. So on your page of your condensed, um, report, for Evolith, our fund balance, uh, was 4,170,000 plus some change.
Right.
And, um, I can follow those numbers on page 18 and page 20. But, um, we had, um, revenues over expenditures, we actually had expenditures over revenues of about $636,000. And I think we've discussed that previously and even before we were consolidated. And although we had, um, more expenditures over revenue and we had that deficit, our fund balance still ended up to be over $4 million, right?
Right.
4.7. And, uh, it looks like in 2019, we had about 4.774 million. So we, we're still carrying a fund balance from one year to the other, even with that one year, um, you know, expenditures being more than revenues. But my question is, um, one of my questions is, in this audit, I see where you have the numbers accounted for, for the 3 million that Evolith Gilbert reserved from its general fund for the new element. But where, where do they appear in, uh, these other breakdown revenues, like on page 18 and page 20? I'm trying to reconcile where they're counted for in the audit numbers. And, and then for, oh, you're looking for that, would that mean that if we didn't designate that 3 million, would we not, instead of 4.17 million, we would have 7.17 million or, or not? That's, or that's all included in there?
It's, it's all included in there. And where you're talking about, if you look on page 16 of the audit, we have restricted, uh, and this was as of June 30th, 2020, 1,329,881, which is if you add up the 252, the 296, the 47,000, the 677, the 65. And there's an unassigned fund balance, 2,849,58. That comes from the top, so that's where those numbers come from. And this is prior to the commitment that was done moving over to 2909.
Um, let's see, but our board committed that before we consolidated, right? Our old.
Right, or, um, right, prior to consolidation, but it actually happened, whether it was June 30th or right away at July 1st. I'm not exactly sure of the timing, but it wasn't, it's not reflected on, the commitment isn't reflected on the, um, the 630, 2154 Evolith Gilbert School District. Audit.
I, I was trying to react to that almost, because I had some of the same questions that, uh, Mark Forty had previously about if we hadn't committed that 3 million, would we have had that 600, some thousand dollar, 636 deficit?
No, that, it's, that deficit would still been there, you're just putting the general fund dollars in a different pocket. But overall, if you start, your, your end balance is 4,170, I'm gonna make sure I see it, millions and not thousands. But, um, that's exactly what, of the 2154 portion that went over, that's the same amount. It just, um, um, the, the, um, the loss that you had, which comes from, um, page 18 of the audit, general fund still shows a 636,834 loss in the general fund. And that, that would be the same regardless of if the amount was committed or not. And that that would be the same regardless of if the amount was committed or not.
Okay, I got that. Thank you, Mr. Knutson, um we have to move on, um thank you so much for the audit update.
Thanks for having me.
Uh next item on the agenda is. Agenda item six, it's the Kraus Anderson Quarterly Project Update.
The audit report or no?
All right, that's a tough fact to follow, but we'll try. Just one of the requirements of our contract, which is a good requirement, is that every quarter we update you on the status of the of the projects. You have a uh, I'm sorry, there's some new members, I'm Patrick Gallagher from Kraus Anderson, I'm the senior project manager. This is Paul Maul, the high school project manager, and this is Pete Obenan. Who is the elementary Evelyn Gilbert project manager. So what we will do is give you an update, it's gonna be very quick because in the uh read ahead packet, you've got all the nuts and bolts information. And a lot of the logs that are required by our contract to give you. But anytime you have questions, I can't stress this enough, let us know. Probably most efficient to go through Dr. Schmidt for a lot of them, but if you want to talk to us directly about an issue. So we'll start with the high school and we'll just go through, give you a quick update on that. Then with the elementary, then we're gonna talk about the Virginia elementary and then where the demolition projects are today. And then the next meeting, we'd like to do, offer up to you the hour before your normal board meeting. A tour of the elementary school. We are far enough along as you're gonna carry the update here today, by that meeting, which would be two weeks from now. We'll have enough undercover that it'll be conducive to doing a tour if you'd like to do that. We'll have you back here by six o'clock so you can start your meeting on time. And then two weeks after that, we do the same thing for the high school. Little trickier because it's outside, but we'll have the gym pretty well set up so you can walk inside of that anyway, so.
Is the publican?
Here is not to take too much of your time, but to keep you in touch with what's going on on the projects.
Will the, any public be invited, Pat?
Um.
Just pardon me.
Thought about that, I think our intent is I will do the info and you pass it on to them.
But liability, you said Tim?
I would probably think liability wise, it wouldn't be possible. If you have somebody that is very interested, who's contacted you directly, just talk to me and we'll see.
Okay.
Okay, all right, high school, Paul Knowl, take it away, excellent, this is Paul Knowl from Kraus Anderson speaking. Grab my mask just so I'm a little bit more audio legible here. So a quick update on the high school, like we said, no more than five minutes here. Um wish you would have been able to see the site when it was a little bit brighter on, we have some very large cranes. Or I should say the district has some very large cranes uh working out on the job site right now. Getting a lot of steel production done and they're getting a lot of precast production done. Um so just like you saw, the elementary school kind of emerged out of the ground and out of nothing. We have started that phase on the high school now. And over the course of the next couple of months, you're gonna get to see the entire superstructure of the building kind of appear out of out of nowhere, so. It's a very exciting time. So really quick on safety, budget, schedule, quality. So to date, just wanted to highlight just the the sheer amount of hours that have been expended. Uh by contractors working on your project to date. Uh as of a couple of weeks ago, we hit the fifty thousand hour mark. Um it doesn't include any K A time, doesn't include any design team time, that is purely people producing out onto your job site. Um right now, we're up to about sixty-five workers per day working on your job site, um which is about five hundred hours. And so all of those hours to date have been worked injury free, uh which is really fantastic. Very minimal impacts uh that are significant due to COVID nineteen. We have had very few cases that have been reported on the job site, um so so no real issues there. We have not been informed of any uh major schedule impacts or major cost impacts to date that are associated with uh COVID nineteen. And we do have another OSHA consultation coming up in about two weeks. Really quick on the budget standpoint here, I'll just hit the high points as well, this information was in the packet. Um but I'll just touch really quickly on the bottom line uh of our spent to date column. So to date, I committed about eighteen million dollars out of the one hundred eighteen million dollars on the project. That is about sixteen percent of the total project in terms of the finances there. And we're about twenty percent complete uh in terms of timeline, so with the thirty day billing cycle lag, that is exactly appropriate to where. Uh your contractor should have billed you for so far. We've also been working on integrating the rest of the contractors into the project over the last period as well. We're about eighty-five percent complete with the value management process. If you remember, we had this big opportunity with the high school project after bid package number two. We had a five point five million dollar plan that was presented. And again, we're we've committed through and and we're resolved through about eighty-five percent of that to date, which is really fantastic.
Paul, a quick, quick question, a- at one point, I mean, it looks like we still have three point three million in the. Uh contingency on on the high school and we've gone through a series of cuts, some of which I think were somewhat draconian frankly. At what point do we say that this money for the contingency can be available for the project?
Yeah, so as of, you know, a couple, you know, one or two weeks or so, this information is really through kind of December thirtieth. Uh we've worked through a lot of the changes for earthwork and things like that, so there have been some other expenditures to the contingency. Um so there is less than that available. Uh I think that given the pace that the project is on and being only twenty percent complete, knowing that things will continue to come up. Um I I wouldn't recommend yet any transfers of the contingency to funding. Any sort of those other value management uh type adjustments, so. I don't think there's going to be any additional uh significant cuts or revisions to the project. Um the the remaining couple of of items that we have to work through are pretty minor in nature. Um so I think, I think between that balance that that things will be okay.
But at some point, there's no reason to have a contingency anymore, correct? You you that money would go for the project.
Yep, as as the project does progress, you are a hundred percent uh correct, Director Schobert. What we like to wait for though is for some more time to elapse. Um but but yes, as as we get towards, you know, maybe the eighty or ninety percent complete mark. And we look, we do an assessment on what the outstanding risks or liabilities that could possibly come up are. And then we'll look at what the balance of the contingency is. And it, you know, based on our history and experience, you know, we know where the contingency should be at that particular point in the project. And as we get towards further completion, then yes, that money is is absolutely money that gets returned to the project, that gets returned to the referendum. Um that if if unspent can be used on other projects or to be used for upgrades on this project. Um I just don't think the time is quite yet. But that is the future of that contingency balance, yes.
Be about a year from now.
Yep, that's, oh right. When we're through superstructure envelope, some of the big mechanical, electrical installs, yes. Okay, we're gonna move on from budget here. Uh real high level on schedule, like I just mentioned when we were talking about money spent to date. Of twenty percent complete with the project, which is really fantastic, and this may be hard to read, but I've said full of wonderful memories here in red. Complete and full of exciting opportunities and teamwork here in the gray, so. Really looking forward uh to the next twenty-four or so months of working on the project and there there is a lot more fun to be had, so. Uh all the spirits are very high still and and your contractors are doing really fantastic work for you. Really quick snapshot, just to give you an idea of what work kind of occurs in a two week period. Um you can see this was, you know, two weeks ago, this is kind of where we are today. Just helps give you an idea of where we're at with the foundation systems, this is all your concrete footings that are underneath the ground. You can see most of the pool, a lot of the performing arts center, all of the gym, all of the music suite. That whole north learning neighborhood and and now working our way south. Everything that you see that has colors on it really has produced concrete work in place uh sitting out there right now, so. You can actually see we're we're very far along with the building foundational system. And again, we're moving towards the superstructure erecting as the next major phase. This is just a diagram to show you uh where your precast installation is at, so. The entire floor for the gymnasium is all set, uh the big box of precast for the gymnasium is all set. And if you even looked out there today, uh the structural steel for the north learning neighborhood. As well as some additional blue precast lines are all working their way down as well, so. They started erecting this north learning neighborhood, I think uh early this week or later last week, and they're making really fantastic progress. Then we just are gonna end with five quick pictures uh of the site. This was a Bill Bryson aerial photography picture that was sent over to us. Um so you can see your big gymnasium box is all in place here. Uh your contractors have added a second mega crane onto the site, you can definitely see both of them from the highway if you drive by during the day. Very exciting to watch them work. Like I mentioned, mostly into foundations for the rest of this portion of the building here. Uh but when you don't have the red overlay, you can really get a sense even of of where all those concrete footings are. And again, our our next big area that we're working in right now that already looks dramatically different after a week is the north learning neighborhood. So really exciting progress being made. Okay, this is just a shot of that north learning neighborhood, you can actually see the columns starting to be stood up here vertically. And this is the second crane that was added onto the job site, very large. Um so a lot of great production working there. Also see, this is your elevator core that services the north learning neighborhood. All right, this is just a shot of your gymnasium box, so this is the kind of the furthest northern portion of your building here. Uh really unique, beautiful designs on the outside of the precast that the design team worked on. And um these Lego blocks will just continue to be set in place all along the side of the building. Uh they'll be here for probably until late May or early June, so we're looking at kind of a five month period. To actually putting up the whole skeleton of your building. And just like you see on the elementary school, we'll come right behind with the exterior walls and we'll come right behind with the roofs right after that. Soon we'll be enclosed and building out the interior. This is just a shot of your locker rooms space, so this is beneath the gymnasiums, but I li- I wanted to include this picture. Because it's really one of the first enclosed spaces that you have, so you can really get the sense that uh we're starting to come to a building. Um so this is just all the underground plumbing and stuff that goes into the dirt. Uh that happens after we can enclose it and heat it and get some lights in, so just wanted to share that one too. All right, and then our last picture here uh shows you a little bit more of the of the structure that's going on. Um this is, Highway fifty-three is out to the west here, uh but this shot really, I just wanted to. Get you a little bit better view of the crushing plant operation that you have on site, so. This is all the rock blast material, uh sorry, right here, that gets run through the crushing machine. And becomes aggregates that'll be reused onto your job site. All right, so with that, that was our fast and fun project update, again, um working really well with the design team. Working really well with the advisory team group, uh your contractors are being very fair, your contractors are producing fantastic work. Uh and we're really excited about the way that the project's going right now. And we'll see you next quarter.
Awesome, does anyone have any questions for Paul? All right, thank you.
You are welcome, all right, I'll turn it over now to Pete, oh sorry, you wanna do the intro, Patrick? So Pete is gonna give you an update on the very exciting elementary school and all the progress, we're jealous about where you're at right now, Pete.
I know I get quite a few questions about how COVID's affect the schedule and and the supplying. We're seeing now that we got in just before a big problem with steel. Steel right now and anything made out of steel is very hard to come by, I know that coming from the iron range, that seems crazy. But it's it's getting that steel to a point where it's a raw material. And a lot of the factories had shutdowns due to COVID and uh we are running into that right now. Um a lot of items that contain steel have gone from like sixty-eight weeks to twenty plus weeks of delivery. So we're we're, you will probably see that we will get a lot of materials delivered early. Because if we can get them, we're gonna get them and we're gonna keep them here on site and store them, so. Just to give you that, Pete Samuel. Go ahead, Pete. I like your guys' new uh name tags. All right, Evelyn Gilbert Elementary School, probably pull the mask. Not loud enough.
So similar to what Paul went through on the high school, go through a construction update, budget, and then any questions got at the end. Stop me anytime if you have any questions before that, so. Uh as Paul mentioned, we are a little bit further along. So just some completion dates to give you an idea, um all these dates here are uh completion dates of these items. Uh masonry, all of our exterior masonry and stairwells are complete uh to date and the next. Stuff we have for mason is the generator room for the interior and uh. Chase going up to the second, so. Um steel erection, we got the area D decking is complete. And we are working on the area C decking, obviously all of this decking is complete from the last time we talked. Um exterior metal stud, we've been working our way around the uh exterior of the building here. And working our way into the courtyard, I'll show you some pictures as we get closer. Uh insulated panels, we started here as well and started working our way down to the south end of the building. And we're sitting right about at the loading dock right now and then jumping into the courtyard as well. Uh to get our heart enclosed here in red area. Underground plumbing is completed down here in the kitchen, also on the north side of the heart. And we just completed this week um the underground plumbing for area D, so now we're prepping for the slabs, so. Uh some similar graphics that you saw for the high school for um completions. So as I mentioned, we got our underground plumbing and slab done on the north side of the heart, on the south side in the kitchen. So these dates that you're seeing here are for completion dates for metal studs in green. Next slab, as I mentioned, is the self-learning wing down here, which will be, that's next week. And then a couple of weeks later, we'll be up in the north learning wing and then we'll finish off our slab upgrades uh in the heart. Uh we're saving this one for last, it looks kind of like we're jumping around, but uh we have to leave that out for now. As we work our topping slabs for the second floor and get our mechanical units on either side of the heart. And we need this access with the heavy equipment to lift those mechanical units up, so. As I mentioned, the topping slabs, uh north side of the heart be next week and then south side of the heart a couple of weeks later. Uh insulated panels, as I mentioned, is down to about the loading dock and then we are starting uh this week over here um in the courtyard. So roofing graphic, I know there's lots going on here, but essentially we have completed uh this flat area. Where the roof drains are and they're working their way up to the peak. And then they'll come back down here and work their way back up to the peak here, jump on to the self-learning wing. And then by mid-March, we should be uh fully roofed um the north learning wing. So hollow core plank for the second level, all the hollow core plank is installed and crowded, so we're good there, all complete. Roof choice and metal decking, obviously uh where we got roofing is all completed. Uh this is all decked as well and we are currently working on our decking on area C and actually we're probably about right here right now, so. Metal studs, um up on the north side of the gym where your translucent windows are, those are complete. As I mentioned, we started here on the southwest corner of the gym, worked our way down around the building. By the end of the week, we should be wrapping up down in this corner. The parapet and courtyard wall and this parapet are all complete, we're just gonna keep working our way around. We also have an interior metal stud crew working uh currently on the north side of the heart. And we should be starting the kitchen metal studs uh interior this week as well. So we got an exterior crew of metal studs and an interior crew. And we just went through roofing, so that's about where we're at, uh working our way up to our expansion joint and then working our way up to the peak. Insulated panels, start at the southwest corner of the gym, working our way down the south wall and we're just about to the corner here. And right now, they're also working on the uh level one office. So slab on grades, as I just mentioned, slab upgrade is done here, north side of the heart, south side of the heart in the kitchen. Um underground plumbing just finished here, so we're prepping for this slab. And we did pour this stairwell as well and got our uh steel stairs installed. And we did pour this stairwell as well and got our steel stairs installed. So flipping through some pictures, thought this was a neat one, just after sunset. See your gym box here with your translucent windows and you can see the light coming through. Get an idea of what it looks like for a basketball game this time of year. Then insulated panels here are these white panels, so I'll get a better picture coming up. So again, gym box, all these metal strips here are your Z skirts for your metal panel install. And these are your insulated panels with the Z skirts. So inside the gym, kind of use this as our laydown area and prepping for some HVAC and electrical roughens. So HVAC is complete, electricals continuing on through this week. So jumping back outside the building, north side of the heart and then your main entrance. So now we're going to jump right inside on the first level. And your slab is poured and metal studs are actually going up right now. Should be wrapping up by the end of the week. And then you jump up to the second floor, just above that area where some mechanical units are going. And then you can see also about where the kitchen is and mechanical units up there. So down by the loading dock, southwest corner of the building, you have your utilities, gas and electric installed. And as I mentioned, the insulated panels are about to the corner. And we're starting to work our way around the office. So that's jumping inside to the kitchen. Got our deep press slab here for your cooler and freezer. Now coming around the corner, down the south side of the building, this is the self-wall, the self-learning wing. And metal studs are probably about right here actually completed now. This is looking at the end of Area D towards back into the building. And just a progress photo of the underground plumbing that's all complete now. So so it's the north side of the south wing. You can start to see the courtyard wall here, standing in the courtyard. Second level of Area D. From the building, looking out towards the stairwell, towards the end. And then from the stairwell, looking back in towards the building. At your courtyard, here's your rendering to give you an idea of where you're at. All of our curtain wall glass coming here, some windows up here. Now jumping inside of that courtyard wall is the bridge that goes across over the top of your playground. And then just looking out into the courtyard from the bridge. Now the north learning wing, this is the self-wall here. As I mentioned, we're working on decking. We're probably sitting about right here with decking right now. Just another view of the north wing. This is looking from the second level of the south wing, going across the courtyard. And then just looking inside that temp enclosure down here. Got that temp enclosure heating to thaw the ground for underground plumbing, starting this way. Second level of that north learning wing, standing at the building, looking out the east end where the stairwell is. And then just looking from the gym and looking at roof completion right about here. As I mentioned, up to our expansion joint, working their way up to the peak. And then they'll come back up the other way. That's all I've got for a construction update. Any questions so far?
What are we heating this building with? Forced air, hot, or what are we heating it with?
So there are multiple different sizes of heaters.
Uh huh.
I think I had a picture of one or a partial of one.
One of the things we're doing here is it takes quite a bit of time to do that outside skin because of the metal studs and insulated panel. So we're kind of building this building from the inside out in a lot of cases. And that's why you see that that poly temporary piece and then the temporary heaters. And they're a series of fans to move that around. And we're using temporary heaters for construction and they're a
No, I mean, when the building is complete, what do we, I mean, what efficiency equipment are we running to heat this building? I mean, we are in northern Minnesota. Are we going to be like in the high to mid 90s? Are we going to be?
Yeah, they have a, the heating system on this is a combination of slab heat in the in the lower grades because they sit on the floor quite a bit.
Tubing or electric?
That's a horizontal type system.
Okay.
On the floor. And then the rest of the system is done through these make-up air units because it is such a tight building. So
So it's going to be a combination of a boiler, forced air with outside air?
Yep, and then V I V boxes to do some of the reheating.
The boiler system is just for the self-learning wing, for the pre-ka-ka.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Again, well, this building is about ready for you to walk through. We have enough heated spaces, so in two weeks, if you want to come and see it, appreciate it. We'll meet right at the front canopy at 5 o'clock and we'll go up and take a look at it.
Great.
Just a quick overview of the budget. We're about just over 40% complete and just under 40% built. So that's about where we're sitting. You guys have all that in your packet, so any questions on the budget?
Doesn't look like it.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Oh, no. You got it. So the next part is Virginia, I'm going to pull this off now that I'm speaking. Virginia Elementary, we are currently at about 50% complete on the design development. So schematic, design development, construction drawings. And we are getting ready for the 15th of February when they will give us that set of drawings to do an updated estimate. So I'm just going to real quickly show you, we don't have this on the quarterly report because this project isn't far enough along to give you progress reports because we haven't started the construction. But we will talk about the design, the bidding, where the schedule's at, where the budget's at, and then some quick closing comments. So we are 50% complete on this design. This is a rendering, obviously, but this thing's really coming together nice. It is a brick skin on a triangular building that's bumped up against your existing gym. And some pretty neat site features out here with this patio up on the second level, as you've seen before, with your commons down below it. So that is pretty well locked in now. The spaces and the rooms and the sizes are pretty well locked in by the design team. And I know that Cunningham Group is on the line right now, so feel free if you want to jump in. But this, this project's coming along pretty quickly here now. This is the patio up above, so this is on the second floor. First floor is below them. And that's where the cafeteria area is and the commons.
Pat, I was going to ask the question, and I did ask it last time. What was the cost per square footage of brick versus the metal panels? I mean, and you said brick was cheaper per square foot. Well, why didn't we use brick on this building? I'm not like trying to, I'm just saying, what would be the purpose of? You know, you talked about weathered panels and metal panels and brick being cheaper and, but why? You know, brick would weather a lot better than these metal panels, I would think. I mean, so if that was the case, for budgetary reasons, why wouldn't we have used brick in the, this campus or here?
Yep, several reasons. One, I think, just the fact that you're on the iron range and you're in a steel area. And the intent was to use steel from the area as a part of that design. But I'll let the design team talk more on that. The other thing is, is the speed of construction. It's hard to find a lot of masons nowadays. And if you did the entire school with that, like the high school, that would take a lot of masons and a lot of time. So that's where we have a combination of masonry on the high school and metal panels and precast. We kind of mixed it up that way so that not any one work scope would take too many people out of the market. So that's one of the other reasons. Then I think just aesthetics. You know, if you look at a modern building nowadays, just the standard masonry doesn't really cut it for a cutting-edge building that's an academy and a new campus, so.
So you're saying the, so what is the facade going to be on the Virginia campus?
On the Virginia, this one is going to be
Yeah, that's what I was referring.
And the reason being is that it's in a downtown urban environment and it's bumped up against an existing gym that you're trying to match and, and really fit into that downtown area.
So what was the cost per square foot? I mean, I understand trying to match.
Yeah, it's about $35 a square foot for brick to go in. And it's about 45 for, for the metal panel system. So it's just a little bit more for the metal panel.
So we could have saved quite some money had we chose to use brick on this campus or and I understand you were saying that the manpower is not there, but.
Got to look to it, the duration of the project. If you have a real large project, that extends the overall duration and there's general conditions to go with every month that you're on the site. So I wouldn't say it's a direct correlation. They're relatively close on price. But the metal panel is a little more expensive just because it takes more labor in place to put that up. Okay?
Yeah.
So this is the, the front entry. This is your main door where you'll come in, Virginia Elementary. And again, the commons beyond it. They're just, they were just doing some planning on types of things you could do on the outside wall. None of that's finalized, but
Fuck you did, Bill.
Thanks.
Just real quick, the different levels, and I won't go into this much because the design team does that. But your common space, remember, up above that is where that patio space is. And then you've got your kitchen and all of your, your base, your main office and your server room, your music area over here. That's all that basic stuff that all the grades use in first. And then second and third is all classroom-type environment. That's your commons. Level two and level two and three are basically the same. And again, remember, the gym stays and that connection stays. And we do some infilling in between there. So bidding update. If you remember, we are still in pre-construction. And we are going through the design development. We're about 50% complete with the design. 15th of February, we'll get that. And we will, this time, not just do pricing from our historical data. We'll go up to contractors, different partners that we work with, and make sure that we're tracking good on this budget. Because we were, we did have a $3 million alignment issue when we did our S D design, if you remember right. We're within that 14% target window. But when you picked the second schedule, that was a more, a more cost-effective schedule option to go with, if you remember. And where we do the partial demo and we get this done one year earlier. So that's less inflation and it worked out to our advantage that way. That is 6% of inflation built in. We have quite a bit of site work that has been redesigned to do some of the savings that we need to get this within budget. The design isn't fully done yet. So as we get that narrowed down, we're using that data, that cost data to get back within budget. It's working pretty good. Schedule update. So these are the key dates, that February timeframe for design development. In June, we'll do the construction drawings. We'll do another estimate with contractor input. And then we'll do bidding in December of '21, so a year from now. And the reason for that is we'll start that construction that's underneath the existing gym and those two locker rooms that we're going to take to put the boilers and all the mechanical in. So we need to get that done a little earlier than just the site work that next spring. And we'll do the evacment and the demo bidding so that we can take Roosevelt only down, leave the high school in June and August of '22. And then the high school students will move to the beautiful building that Paul's going to build later on in June and August of '23. And then we'll complete the construction in January of '24 and then move in from that February to August timeframe. So that, in a nutshell, is we're right on schedule. The budget update, again, nothing in the spent column here yet. We're all in pre-construction, but we'll keep this up to date each time we show it to you. And that's all I have for Virginia Elementary. Any questions about the elementary school?
Yes, I have one.
Okay.
One more.
Yeah.
Pat, on that, what's this little, the patio that you got that's outside this, what do you call it, learning patio? I mean, what's that going to be out open into the elements? It's going to be a commons underneath. How are you, how was all that going to work? It looks like you have grass up there or something?
Yep, part of it
There's going to be some maintenance?
Yeah, it'd be performed by
by the staff to mow grass on a roof? That's
Yeah, one thing, yeah, let me just go back real quick before
I'm kind of looking at the mechanic, look at the mechanics of it. It's just
You go back.
Great.
Right there.
Right there, so I mean
So this area right here is grass and you can mow it. Drive right up there, it's just like a hill, see how it's sloped down? This area up here is all, you've seen patios in urban environments up on roofs. And that'll, that will have a waterproofing membrane and all those things. And we will drain that to drains and pull that off. So it won't just all run down the hill there.
So for winter time, how are you going to keep the heat from underneath?
It's all insulated.
It's not going to melt and create all kinds of problems with the roof drains or nothing like that?
No, no, it's done quite often. Yep, it's a, the whole idea is to give you an environment out here to take any teacher instructor that wants to take learning outside. It takes a long time to walk way down here and do things, but to just come out here and to do a class or to offer that up for just a spontaneous small group thing. It's, you also see it in the high school and the elementary that we're building now in a courtyard situation. Okay?
I just Flood it and use it for hockey.
I just see it's like in, it's like in, it's in the open and out in the elements. And I just, you know, you worry about problems in the future of the building shifting and something cracking. And now you got water leaking inside and possibly, and I mean, I just, I see this, you know what I mean? I see, I see it all the time on a lot of commercial buildings where that stuff freezes and then the drains get plugged and now we're, we didn't give any, you know, invest, well, I don't know, I'm trying to think of the right word, but we just didn't think, you didn't think that out too well that we had this big snowstorm and there's just all this weight of this snow on there. It could be a roof of a building, I mean, it could be a roof of the building as well. But, you know, how are you going to drain that off to make it a usable place? I mean, are they going to have to shovel off to make it usable for the six months or the four or five months out of the year? You know, are they, is it going to be like not usable for, in the winter months? Or are we going to have to shovel that off to make it a usable learning space?
That's a decision that, that you can make from an operations standpoint, but could definitely be used in the winter.
Because I just, I just see that being like
Yep.
Maintenance, I mean, it's, it's more maintenance. You know, and we're trying to get away from all the maintenance and now we're creating maintenance, which I agree, you know, and it's, it's nice, but I just, you know.
I, I guess look at it this way, an EPDM roof, a rubber-type roof over a concrete deck, is not pretty standard on a commercial building. That's really what you have there. That's really what that is. The only thing that gets added to that, and I'm oversimplifying, is, is a drainage system that's underneath and then pavers to protect it.
But no one's playing on a commercial roof.
Right.
You know, it's up there walking.
It could.
Go ahead.
That's where the pavers come in to protect that system. So, yeah, it's a pretty neat system though. And, and it's a good thing to option for, for instructors to use.
Well, and after all these years of having no grass at Roosevelt, any way that we can have grass and opportunities to be outside, I just think this is one of a kind, unlike anything else we have, have around here.
Yep.
And I couldn't see, I mean, so, so you walk up to the edge of this thing, what's going to keep, I mean, what, I actually see, what's going to keep people from like, say, per se, falling off of it?
Yep, there's railings there.
Okay.
There's a railing system. It's a little hard for you to see right now. Comes right along there and all the way down here.
So is that the only playground that would be on that? I mean, there's going to be other, something and there's going to be, you're going to be creating a tremendous amount of green space by taking that whole building down.
Right.
So there's obviously other spots on this campus that are
It is, yep. And I can update you that on the next, the next one. Because out in here, there are all kinds of features on the site. Because one of the things, you have so much parking around that site. Because like you said, the high school building was there. So now all these sites where you were parking, keep parking there. Now you've got all kinds of green space that you can utilize here, like you had said, that
It looks ever happy. It's really beautiful, you know?
Yeah, it's really going to be nice.
Hey, Bill, look at that green space between the ramp and the building. Virginia's going to have a slide in the winter.
So you're going to rob from, you're going to rob from, you're going to rob from Lesky on it, right? You're going to, you're going to own your own little
Keep him off the other course.
Yeah.
All right, real quick, I'm just going through the demolition. You, most of you were in the meeting where we You, most of you were in the meeting where we went through and got your approval on the timeline and what we're planning to do. But just to update you, the hazardous material and demo is coming up. Will, the first building that we will do will be on the Evolith campus, the old junior high building. And we will put out bid documents to get abatement contractors for that. And then a demolition contractor that will take that building down, fill it in, in lifts and come back, compact up that below grade piece and it'll be a green site that is ready for whatever the city wants or whatever you want to do in the future. So, real quick on that, um, demolition timeline was approved on the 11th of January. Shortly after, we sent it out to both the city of Gilbert and the city of Evolith. And there have been ongoing meetings going on, uh, to discuss sale options, liabilities, situations. How are we going to go through this? So thank you for giving us the timeline and releasing that so that we could start that planning process. Jeff Carey's been courting with the city councils of both Evolith and Gilbert. The possibility of buying areas and then also talking about areas that we have depicted in blue on the next graphic that are going to be left like tennis courts and playgrounds and things like that. Because that liability will transfer to, to the city or to somebody because you can't just leave that out there. So this is that graphic that we had for Virginia. Uh, didn't change anything here. Things, key things to remember is the students temporarily vacate for two school years. They, uh, from the elementary process. And, and we keep the high school in place until 2023 and then remove that piece. So we'll get pretty far along on that triangle of construction in the year that the high school is the only one on site. This was a similar graphic that we showed you how we are going to demolish the Roosevelt School. We changed it a little right here. It used to come like this. We went and did some exploration and looked at egress and how are you going to get out of the basement? Because your, 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 uh, media center down here, that's utilized for both the high school and the elementary. So we need a second way to get out of there. So we had to keep that stairwell. There's an electrical room there, a mechanical room. So we'll dodge this around like that and cut all of this out. You can see the new building footprint right here. I'll trace it around. So that's the new building place, I'm sorry, come all the way down to here. Place on the old footprint. So it'll actually be a little closer to the street and extend a little further out into that big area. It's on the east side of the school. And then we have about 25 to 28 feet between that and the high school that will still be functioning for a year. So it's a little tight there, but it is feasible. So that's how we're going to work that. Uh, I won't go into any of this. These are just a, a list of notes of all the, the different things we're doing on the campuses. The key thing, working with Jackie Monahan from the city admin, who is the city administrator from Evolith. And working out the fuel pumps and the gas, uh, the gas pump system that is there for the bus garage. And the fact that we're, we have to leave the high school in place, even though those students will be transferred over to the new high school. Because that's where the heating plant is and that needs to heat Franklin so that we can have the students from Roosevelt to go to Franklin. So that's kind of the, the short version of all that text. So then on the Evolith campus, these areas that remain, you know, the old ball field, the football stadium, uh, the softball fields, all of that that remains, Jeff is working that out that the city can take it and maintain it and, and take that on. Because that's something that has to be closely coordinated. And if we start now, it's not a big deal. It's not a big rush. Um, a couple of things that you, were conditions of your approval when we did the timeline. One of them was to work out the shooting range agreement, which, uh, Mr. Carey is going to give you an update later in the agenda today, I saw. The other one was deal with the fueling situation and find and out and, and alternate plan for fueling, which they are working on, both Dr. Schmidt and Mr. Carey are working that. And, uh, and then confirm that we have clearance on the historical building. I separated out the historical building now separate, just so we can deal with that piece. So we will take down this building as the first building to demolish. And we'll do that this summer, if everything goes for permitting. Um, again, Gilbert campus, lots of things going on. Demolition in July of 2022. Um, the high school students will leave. The seventh and eighth graders will, will have to move over to, uh, Evolith High School for one year, just because to have two grades there just doesn't make sense in that big building. So that's pretty much the Gilbert situation. We'll have some updates on that for you on the next quarterly meeting. And again, we believe the city is pretty interested in the main red building, but they want the green building to come down. And there's a lot of other areas out here that are available for development and/or recreation for playgrounds and such. So budget update, um, Evan, again, we haven't spent anything on demo yet. We will shortly. So right now, I have to come over here because it's hard to read. 7,452,000 is what we have reserved right now. What we have done is we have, the last time that we were here, you asked, how are you dividing this up? And what goes to what campus? And what if we sell a building, then we don't have to spend it? This is our current budget on both the hazardous materials and the demolition for each campus. Adding up to that 7,500,000, pretty much. Um, that's our current status. As we go through these meetings and we find out that somebody wants to buy building X and we don't have to tear it down, we'll reallocate those funds. When we get that pretty well locked in, if there's any money left, back to your comments on what do we do with contingencies? If we have a good plan for the demolition and we saved money, we can put that back into contingency and then spend that on the other projects as well. So that's why we're kind of in a push to get these things, not so much that we need to tear the buildings down now, but we need to get those dollars reallocated if we're not going to spend them on, on removing buildings.
And these numbers here, uh, if I buy, that's, you got a million bucks for Gilbert? That's only taking on that one small portion, not the whole?
That's exactly right. Yep.
If they don't buy it, we're over budget on the demo.
Yeah, and we do have, I mean, these are really rough numbers because, that's why I've got the old first draft here. Because we don't know for sure what they're going to buy, but the information today, that's where we allocated these dollars. But you are correct. If, if for some reason the city says, hey, you have to tear all this down or, or we sell one of the buildings to someone else, it, it does change this budget.
So you're saying, Pat, that it's going to cost a half a million dollars just to tear down that little building? Behind Gilbert?
For the demolition piece, it's not that easy. There, we have to unhook some utilities. You're going to have those continue to be utilized for the, for the new building. There has to be some rework of that as well. So yes, that's what we have budgeted right now.
Oh, so it's budgeted in there to make the re-hookup of utilities?
We have to cut them off properly.
Right.
And then if the city of Gilbert is going to want to reconfigure those in some other way, there's a certain amount of cost savings we'll have to do there. Well, we'll dig the hole, we'll cut them off. Then do they pay for that to be hooked up to the old building in a different manner? That's going to get worked out.
So a half a million dollars just to abate that little portion of that building as well?
Well, this, uh, for Gilbert, the abatement piece is to abate the entire camp.
Okay.
Yep. Yep. Sorry about that. I misunderstood the question. Then the demolition piece is about 500,000.
Just for that little portion?
For that gym and the utilities associated with it. And the other part that has to be taken into account is if we just take down that old gym, there's no wall now on that corridor that goes down to the new gym. And a lot of the mechanical units are on the old gym. So all those details have to be worked out. So.
I just know, I know the steam lines travel under and then through that building to the new portion. And then the air handler for the gym is located on the second floor of that old part. I know that.
Yeah. So for a demo permit, we have to, we have to deal with those utilities. We can't just tear them out, obviously. So that's why we have some extra money in there for that. As we get that more refined, we'll have less money allocated.
Yeah.
Yep. So that's all we have. That's all four projects in less than an hour. And, and I'm not trying to rush you. It's just value of your time. We go through these quickly. Any follow-on questions, let us know and then we'll start that tour process. Any questions?
Great.
Pat, I like the idea of the hour early for tour.
Yeah.
You know, this couple of us have discussed, as far as the construction project, when you have something big, could we meet an hour earlier for those, instead of coming in at six and going till nine, nine-thirty? We could start at five and with the construction in? That'd be a problem for you guys?
Not for us. It's up to the chair if you.
We can do that, sure. Come in earlier.
Yeah, I like, I like that idea.
So like thinking that for our next quarterly update, come in earlier so we've got time to go through everything?
Yeah, whenever there's something big that we have to discuss, you know?
One of, one of the things you've gone through most of the approvals, things that were going to take a lot of time. Although we still have Virginia Elementary, we have to do that budget approval. But yeah, we can work that out.
Sounds good.
Dr. Schmidt can let us know what you want to do. Earlier works better for us. About 3:30, 4 o'clock, most of the work people are gone. So we can start that anytime.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Phil. Thanks a lot.
Next on the agenda is, uh, agenda item number seven, the consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented or with any amendments?
Still moved, of course.
A discussion? Alright, I'll take a roll call vote. Uh, Director Yohan?
Yes.
Second, I, I, my eye was muted. I have a, um, the removal number two from the consent agenda, revised minutes of the November 23rd meeting. The ones in the packet, um, are still incorrect and I've been talking to Stacy Lampa. And if I work with you, Stacy and Stacy Lampa, to get the correct ones, we can submit them for the next meeting.
That sounds good. Alright. So we'll, um, okay, so that, was that the only thing that you wanted, uh, taken off of the consent agenda? Director Sorkin?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so, um.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
I'm good with the amendment. My, my support.
Okay. So, um, I'll take a roll call vote on the motion to amend or to approve the consent agenda as amended. Uh, Director Yohan?
Yes.
Director Schoburg?
Yes.
Director Tamero?
Yes.
Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Riordan?
Yep.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Sorkin?
Yes.
And Director Sunquist is a yes. Motion passes eight to zero. And then, um, what we can do with those revised minutes is just put those on for the next agenda. And then in the meantime, Director Sorkin, you and, um, Mrs. Lampa and I can get that all situated.
Good.
Okay. Uh, agenda item number eight is reports. And we have Principal Stefanic from the Parkview Learning Center.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Um, I'm coming to you. I haven't been here in a while. So I'm coming to you with quite a few things here. Distance learning went fairly well at the Parkview for the teachers and students. Uh, but I think collectively, we're all happy to be back in the building. Um, we continue to have childcare on Wednesdays for our essential workers. Last week, we had about 34 students. During our distance learning, we were probably closer to 60 students, but on Wednesdays now, we have about 34, 35, give or take. Uh, starting this weekend, next week, our students are completing the STAR testing. Um, this is our benchmark test for the winter. Um, our students do that three or four times a year. So we're looking forward to seeing the, the results on those and the growth and such of our, of our little students. Um, the move back to in-person learning, like I said, we're back in the building now, has forced us at the Parkview to make a few changes. Um, our kindergarten numbers, those families that chose to come back in person uh, versus staying distant or vice versa, those that chose to stay, to go distance, has forced us to make a few changes. So I ended up having to pull a teacher back to teach in-person for kindergarten, which changed a few of our classes, um, but it evened them out. Um, and it's a huge change for those families, students, um, teachers and, and all of the above. But they handled it well, um, and things seem to be going smoothly. So that's, we started with that right away on the 19th with that change. We're finishing up the pennies for patience drive that Mr. Kramer has helped us to run, uh, for several years. Uh, this year, however, because of COVID, it's all online. So there's no coins that are being brought into the buildings. And that, that will end here at the end of this week. Um, February is, is always a busy month in the elementary schools. It's going to be I love to read month for us. Um, and at the Parkview, our theme this year is, uh, Rock Ridge Rockin' Readers. Um, we're going to have some dress-up days, um, mystery readers, stop, drop and read. Um, we have some super reader prizes. And then we have our student setting goals for every week on what they, what they want to achieve for that week in terms of reading. Um, and we have prizes for every week with the end of, end of our month being the big prize of, uh, their movie date with, um, the popcorn and the drinks and everything that they earn throughout the month. So. Um, in terms of kindergarten and preschool, we have registration that's going to get sent out here the middle of February. Um, and those dates for registration, the, the paperwork will get sent out middle of February, but those dates will be at the beginning of March. Uh, so we're gathering all of that information right now. The, um, early childhood, the Quad City Early Childhood Coalition, uh, which we're a part of, has a grant from the Northland Foundation and Blue Cross and Blue Shield for $5,000. Um, and this grant provides time for our early childhood educators to go out into local childcare centers, uh, mentor daycare providers in social emotional skills for children. So, um, that's coming up here, uh, shortly. And they're going to be starting to use the funds from that grant in the spring here. Early childhood family ed, we have had our classes mostly distance and they're all back in the building now. So Mrs. Shannon Kush wanted me to make sure that I mentioned they're all coming back into the building to bring some of those little ones in. And the last thing I have is that pre-K, um, with COVID, we've of course had to be pretty creative. Um, pre-K has a presentation from Hartley Nature Field that's coming into Alcott Park at the beginning of March here. I know I'm a little bit ahead of myself telling you about March dates, but I don't come back to you till, till April. So thought I would share what we had. Otherwise, that's, that's all that I have from the Parkview. So if there's any questions.
Any questions? Thank you so much, Principal Stefanic.
Not a problem.
Next we have Willie Spouts with Rock Ridge Rising.
Hello, good evening, all those good things. How is everybody tonight? I hope you're well. Hopefully we can, uh, get you all fired up again. We, um, have some neat things on the agenda for the Rock Ridge Rising campaign. There's a couple of updates that, uh, the, um, Tuamala donation was for the Performing Arts Center. And, um, you'll notice a, um, very kind, um, nice donation from Dr. Jason Berg, a dentist in, uh, Virginia with a very, very nice $3,500 donation. So thank you, Dr. Berg. And, uh, we at Range Family Dental, we thank you very much for that. And then the, um, Thicke's and the Tecot's and the Swamala, um, uh, donations are all for the Steve Kersey Legacy Fund. So heads up on that as you see that in the, our, um, uh, agenda tonight. And speaking of that, our Steve Kersey Legacy Fund, we received our second installment of the $40,000 commitment from Deanna Kersey. So she's all paid up, her installment, uh, second installment of $20,000. So her portion of the three, uh, Kersey kids is all paid up. And as is now, because of, uh, something you'll be acting on later, I'd like to talk about that now if possible. Uh, William Kersey, the son of Steve Kersey, has, uh, given his $40,000 towards the family's $120,000 donation. So I'm sure you see that on the agenda tonight. Thank you, thank you, thank you very much, Deanna and, uh, William. We appreciate it so very much. Um, thank you to everybody, everybody for that matter. Thank you for your giving. Thank you for your kindness. It is so much appreciated. So that's our latest on our, uh, Rock Ridge Rising. Does anybody have any questions?
So for clarification, Willie, we had spoke, I had spoke to you. The money that's being donated is not for the building of the project. It is for field improvements when people donate.
Correct.
Alright, so can you explain to the public just how that works when people donate?
Yes, for the Steve Kersey Legacy Fund. Is that what we wanted to specifically talk about or?
Uh, yes.
Or, okay, let's.
I think we, that's what we had spoke to, it's about.
The, the Steve Kersey Legacy Fund is a, a fund that we started inside our Rock Ridge Rising campaign. Because the Kersey kids, as I call them, the, um, Kersey kids, they, they were so kind in donating a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to honor their dad in memory of their dad. And then there was a lot of talk and a lot of questions from a whole bunch of other people. How can we help? We would like to honor Mr. Kersey too. We would like to honor Mr. Kersey too. So we decided to start the Steve Kersey Legacy Fund and see if we could get that a hundred and twenty thousand dollars matched just with donations. And there's been a, just a, a, a whole bunch of phone calls of people asking and going to look at how they can and going to look at where they can and everything like that to, to honor hers, as everybody may remember him as being referred to. So I'm looking forward to that happening. So we're, we're seeking to, to match that a hundred and twenty thousand dollars from the Kersey kids to then name the Rock Ridge track, the Steve Kersey Track forever, and we'll be able to honor his, uh, his, him forever. That being said, well, what's going to happen with the money? That money will go towards the track and field program, which hers, you know, was such a part of. It'll go towards getting us safe equipment, the best state of the art equipment, getting us everything we need to be the best that we possibly can be as a track and field program, which Deanna is a part of as a coach, which the Kersey kids want that to happen. It will also go towards anything that can help us make the track and field stadium the best possible stadium it could ever be. Because that's where track and field will happen is at the stadium. So any of that donated money will help us go above and beyond what is already planned for the stadium. So it will help the kids. It'll help us get the best equipment for the kids. It'll help us get the best equipment for the program. It'll help us provide the best possible stadium for track and field. It's obviously the first a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that they donate is going towards this beautiful, wait until you see it when we make our final decision, video scoreboard that will be out on the stadium. It will have a huge video screen on it, which will then, you know, be able to display the times of lane by lane of every track race. And that is really cool because a kid can stand under there and have his first place with his time and everything. It'll be great pictures. It'll let everybody in the place know who won and what place everybody came in. It, 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 that's going to be an incredible scoreboard out there and that's what this has. The original Kersey, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars allowed us to do. We're hoping we can get it matched to then go above and beyond and enrich and enhance this entire project in honor of Curse.
And that scoreboard would be used for soccer, football.
Scoreboard will be used for everything. Yep. Yep. And they, they were the ones that allowed us to get that beauty. As they say in Canada, to get that beauty. It's going to be quite a beauty.
Thanks for clarifying that to the public because, uh, some of them were just thinking that the money was being throwed through at the Rock Ridge Rising Campaign just for to put your name on it. But I had to clarify that, no.
No.
No, that's not what it's for. I mean, it's going to be named in his honor.
His honor.
Okay, but the money was going to go for field improvements, equipment and, and like that for.
Everything to support the track program first, the stadium or the track program. It, it, all of these improvements will allow us to bid on being, you know, to host the region championships. We're already going to host many invitationals and people will come because they'll see, I mean, that scoreboard will be a big enough deal right there. So will the best pole vault equipment, so will the best, um, track equipment, so will the best, you know, seating, the, all the best facilities, all the shot, everything. We will have an incredible facility and this is going to allow us get, to get there and really go above and beyond. All of those donations will help with that.
Super exciting. Thank you.
Thanks, Willie.
Thanks, Willie.
Agenda item eight point three, the gun club lease update with Jeff Carey.
Hello.
Hello.
Thanks for having me tonight. So I just wanted to, I know it was brought up last, uh, meeting that it was a lease with the gun club and there was some question about it. So I just wanted to clarify that. The lease itself is in your packet. Um, the terms, it was, uh, it was signed back in nineteen ninety nine and it is renewable, automatically renewable every July first unless one of the parties, uh, states in writing to the other one, uh, by the last day of April, that something's going to change. Um, so obviously something's going to change. So I, I guess I would recommend to the board, we only have to give them a year's notice, but I, I would recommend that by this April thirtieth that we let them know of our timeline and, in writing and so that they have plenty of time to prepare for whatever comes next.
This is a one-year lease, not a hundred-year lease we heard about.
It, it's a one-year lease that's renew, automatically renewable every year unless somebody says otherwise.
What was the hundred-year thing about?
Well, that was.
I'll answer that because, um, that was my information. I re, evidently I received wrong information and that it's year by year, but we have to notify them by April. So at least we got to look at that contract to, to say, um, so that we know we have to notify them by April of the previous year. That was misinformation on my part.
Any other questions for Jeff? All right. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Agenda item eight point four is Superintendent Shrop.
Um, thank you, members of the school board. I'm here to give you a couple of updates and then Jeff will update you on the COVID uh, part, just because he's in the thick of the COVID vaccines right now. Uh, updates, as you know, as the public knows, uh, the board has approved moving forward on two, in addition to what you're currently doing, other projects. One of them is the attendance boundary lines for when the new elementary is open. And the second one is identifying the new names for the two new elementaries. The new one in Eblith Gilbert, which is close to the high school. And the other one, which would be the new Virginia Elementary, which has construction, has not started on. So the board took a look at, we sent an RFP out, we got responses from the RFP. The board selected who you would like to take a look at this. Uh, Powers Group, the John Powers Group is working on the boundary lines information. They are working on it. They are almost finished with their first look at it. And I believe that at the first board meeting in February, we'll try to get them on the screen here or in person so they can tell you where they're at. And when the public sees this, um, just a reminder to everybody, what you see and even what the board sees, this is not how it's going to be. This is just the first blush, first glance, there will be, uh, what it might look like. There'll be some options that the board can consider. Uh, the Powers Group will have some. Now COVID will make it a little tougher, but we'll have some way for public to react to it to give feedback as far as what they think about the commandments, um, boundaries issues. But what they're currently doing is taking a look at where our current students live, including the ones who are open enrolled from other districts and taking a look at where might they attend elementary school. On the high school level, it simply doesn't matter because everyone's going to the same high school. So there are no attendance boundaries for the high school. So hopefully, um, and I believe you'll have an update the first meeting in February on what is happening next and where they're at. That's on the attendance boundary lines. On the other topic, the, um, school names. In the papers this weekend, you're going to see some ads, I'll call them ads, they're not really ads, they're more notices or announcements. Um, starting the whole process. So Stacy's been, uh, super duper secretary is what I call her. She's been working with John Jensen on how these would look. Um, so they look nice. So in the Vesavi Daily News, Manny Shopper, I said, I said there on Vesavi Tribune, Manny Shopper and then Hometown Focus this weekend, we're going to run that notice in all of them and folks, what we want folks to do is to look at that and that we want them to go to, there'll be a web address there, simply type it in and there'll be instructions to go there. And they want, what we want the community to do is to go there and answer a series of short questions. So we're looking for public input on what their ideas might be for what some of the names might be. We are also going to send the survey out to all of the staff, um, all of the students. Um, and, well, maybe not the educators, um, but the, also to, um, the parents. So they will also get a direct link for this survey. This is optional. People don't have to fill it out, but this is a once in a seventy year opportunity to name your, um, school. Here it is. So what'll happen is after that first wave of information is done, John will probably appear either in person or on Zoom and then he will go over the results with the board and then we'll go into the next phase, which will entail a winnowing down of the most popular items and then we'll have a process to go through that also. So on the board update, just want to let you know that that process is starting this weekend. Any questions from board members on either one of those two topics?
Are you going to put that on social media as well?
That, absolutely. Yep. Uh, we have our social media, um, right here. Stacy is in charge of our social media. Um, and by the way, if you're noticing an uptick in what's going on from the district, that's Stacy. I take no credit for it. That is Stacy, um, who is doing that. So yes, we will make sure it's out there.
Well, is Rock Ridge going to be a part of these elementary schools? I mean, I, I, I thought of, we have to consolidate this and call it Rock Ridge. Look in the elementary, the elementary kids are running around, every kid's got a Rock Ridge shirt or a Rock Ridge. In our Parkview, it could be Rock Ridge, Parkview Edition or, you know, Rock Ridge North and Rock Ridge South. I mean, just, we should make Rock Ridge a part of the school name, regional school.
You could. You are the final decision makers. So we'll see what comes out in the survey and that may come out strong in the surveys that the community wants that kind of, um, alliance allegiance to the greater district. And you certainly could do that.
But you're the one who has to put it in the paper to ask whether they want it or not.
No, because what we're starting out with is a blank slate. So we're not starting out with any conceived ideas. So we're going to see what the public and community and students say first. Now that may come out and that's what people may want. But we're trying not to start with any preconceived notions, ideas of what the names might be.
We're putting Rock Ridge in front of whatever it is. The Rock Ridge Roosevelt, the Rock Ridge Franklin, whatever they come up with.
Yep. And when we get to the, when we get to the narrowing down of it, um, maybe that's, we'll talk more about that. Um, because you'll see whatever the final names are before we do the final voting. Um, and maybe you want to do that. That'll be partly your decision as far as what you want to do on that. Any other questions from the board? All right, I'm going to step off the screen and Jeff is going to give you the COVID update. Um, he is right in the middle of it and I have never seen anything like this in education before. Uh, the process and how fast things are moving on the COVID immunizations. So literally, information is becoming outdated from the state of Minnesota within twenty-four hours. That is how fast things are moving. Um, as far as what we need to do, as far as wanting to get a staff members notified and Jeff will fill you in on this, but the train is moving very, very fast right now. So Jeff, take it away.
All right. So I just want to give you an update of, uh, where, what, what things are happening this past week. Um, as you may or may not be aware, uh, two o'clock on Monday, last Monday, the governor did announce a pilot program to accelerate the vaccination of uh, K twelve education. That means all staff, not just teachers. Um, so we got that notification at two o'clock that we were supposed to, every district was getting allocated so many doses and we needed to, um, submit names and get them registered by, by midnight on Monday. Um, so Rock Ridge had fourteen doses in that, in that initial um, clinic, uh, that happened on Friday and Saturday. And we, uh, we did manage to notify our people and, and got them registered. We were told last Friday that Monday would, might look the same. It might not look the same. Um, so Monday happened today, obviously, and, and we did get awarded allotted, um, extra doses. Um, we got forty-five this week, which is good news. And the problem is they, they didn't, they want to change the process for how they are how they register and how they are notified and whatnot. So as of this very moment, we're still waiting for a registration link that because it's going to open at nine o'clock tomorrow morning, registration is. So we need to get those out to people. But we do have forty-five doses this week. We did make the determination that we are going to, our order, our, our vaccination order is going to go uh, by chronological age, oldest first. So we, we are just going down a chronological age list and picking the first forty-five. Um, we have to contact each of them to make sure they want the vaccine. If they don't, we just cross them off the list and go to the next one and so early tomorrow morning, when, when that thing comes out, when that registration link comes out, it'll, it'll be a busy time until nine, ten o'clock, getting everyone registered and making sure we have enough people. But it is good news that they don't have to wait as far it's, it's just, it's an unfortunate thing that we can't just do everybody at once, but this is the hand that we're dealt. So we're, we're trying to get as many people in as we can. Um, we also have, uh, access to a rush list. People that are ten minutes away, if they have extra doses at the end of the clinic, um, they'll just start calling people that can be there in ten minutes. So I mean, it's crazy. But, um, most of our staff has been patient and, and and receptive and they want to get the vaccine as quick as possible. So we'll just keep plugging away at it. Any questions?
Yeah, Jeff, when do the special needs come in? I, personally, I think they're more important than any other students in our district.
Well, we're not vaccinating students. I mean, it's, it's all staff at this point. I guess for, it would, one of our largest conversations was because there was question of should we take into consideration health concerns of staff or whatnot? We don't have any, we don't have any official knowledge of, of health concerns of staff, so we can't. And the other problem, uh, much like you're saying with special needs, it's, it's really hard to rank who should be more important than others. So the easiest thing to do, I mean, we, there was a bunch of us in the room. We decided the easiest thing to do and most of it would be to go by chronological age at this point.
Can agree to disagree then?
Yep.
Okay.
Anyone else have any questions about the vaccination?
I know about COVID. I hope we could, I mean, is, are we still meeting on Thursdays to, uh, monitor the area cases to, to see about bringing the rest of students back full time or?
Yes, we, we, uh, we actually meet every other Wednesday and, but we, every Thursday we do get, or actually Wednesday night, we get, uh, regional data and it has been going down. Um, our last number was twenty-seven, I think, which is getting close to bringing all of the high school kids back. Twenty is our, is our, uh, magic number that they like to use. So we're, we're getting closer to everyone coming back, but we'll continue to monitor that.
Okay. And, and again, those numbers now are, are just guidelines, correct?
You are correct, Matt. Um.
There's a lot of places opening their secondary up, I understand, that are above where we're at. Just my observation.
You're, you're correct. It is a, it is a, uh, it's still a guidance from the state that isn't a mandate of any kind, but we're, we're, we're trying to monitor how many cases we have in school. That's our, that's our biggest number. Uh, we, we keep track of that and in, in making decisions. We'll, we'll meet again next Wednesday and, and reevaluate to see how things are going. We, we'll have been in hybrid for two weeks at that point.
Imagine staff vaccinations will, uh, maybe sway a decision if you wanted to, uh, to get more of them vaccinated?
Certainly it's going to help. Hopefully now we'll start getting more doses. I mean, that, that initial run of fourteen was disappointing at, at best. Forty-five this week is, is a good, good jump. And if we could get to hundred, hundred fifty next, the, the third week, that would be pretty awesome. They're telling us more is coming, so.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
That's it, that's it, okay. And administration items. We have agenda item 9.1, consider approval of concurrent enrollment contract between Rockbridge Public Schools and Lake Superior College, effective until June 30th, 2021. There was a copy of the contract in the board packet. At this point, I would entertain a motion regarding approval. Motion by Director Tamero, support by Director Anderson. Any discussion? All right, I'll take a roll call vote. Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Tamero? Director Schoberg?
Yes.
Director Yuhon?
Yes.
Director Sorkin?
Yes.
Yes.
Director Reardon?
Yes.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
And Director Sunquist is a yes. Motion passes eight to zero. Agenda item 9.2, consider designating Superintendent Noel Schmidt as the responsible authority under the Minnesota Data Practices Act and open meeting law. So there's a...
Support by Sorkin.
Support by...
Motion by Director Sorkin with support by Director Anderson. Any discussion on this? All right, Director Reardon?
Yes.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Tamero?
Yes.
Director Schoberg?
Yes.
Director Yuhon?
Yes.
Director Sorkin?
Yes.
And Director Sunquist is a yes. Motion passes eight to zero. Agenda item 9.3 is discussion and our consideration of a timeline of special election to fill board vacancies due to resignations. In the, let's see.
So we, I remember at our last meeting, I asked for legal, I asked for some legal counsel to see when we could have this. I would, I would hope that we could piggyback on election in November.
So that is one of the things statute provides, that a school district can hold a special election on one of the following dates. The second Tuesday in February, the second Tuesday in April, the second Tuesday in May, the second Tuesday in August, or the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November.
I, I thought when we, going back several meetings, that we had decided and I thought it was going to be part of a resolution. I don't know if it ended up in that resolution or not, but I distinctly remember a conversation that the consensus was that, at least the solid majority, if not the consensus, was that we would wait and if we could piggyback on another election, we would. If we couldn't, we were going to wait until we had the, we have to do it by next November. And we were going to wait until then unless we could piggyback on another election.
That's how I remembered it.
That was my recollection as well.
I agree.
Gal, what do you have? Do you have a, do you have a comment, Gal? Because your motion at the time was very specific and it did, we did, we talked about it, about piggybacking if it were possible, but as my research and I think Noel also did, or somebody in the administration, that there are no special elections to piggyback on and to save money and...
We don't know that.
I already checked.
Who can?
Gal's not a board member.
Right. Noel, any comment on that?
That was the board, I'm sitting here right now, we are not aware of any.
Yes.
But we're not aware of any.
It might happen between now and then.
But it's your decision as far as what you want to do.
I guess, I would make a motion that if there are no special elections between now and when we have to file to legally comply with the special election, that we would wait until the November date, which would be the day that we legally have to have the election by.
And I would support that.
Okay, so there's a motion by Director Schoberg with support by Director Addy, that we have the special election in November.
Unless we can have piggyback on another election that would cover entire district 2099.
Okay.
Can we take, I mean, can we take action on something that's not on the agenda or would we have to wait till next meeting?
Oh.
Just a discussion.
Right, and our consideration.
And our consideration.
I can save that thought.
Sounds good.
I mean, unless there's, I mean...
Yeah, we've got, we've talked about it, there's a motion made and support. I think we can go ahead and just get it on the books now and... So I'll go ahead and take another roll, a roll call vote on that.
More discussion on that?
Discussion?
I have a question. When you say, Matt, that we have to have it by November, what do you mean, you have the statutory thing that we have to have it by November? Statute says we can have it any one of those months that Stacy just read off and I think the, the intent, it's my opinion, but the intent of this law is to give school districts multiple times during the year, when things happen during the year. Ours happened in November and December. I see no reason to wait until November. I think that the intent is to, and my intent would be to give the people the right to vote on who they want on the school board as early as possible. And I see no reason to wait a whole year with just appointees, let the people decide.
My motion fully complies with the law. I've read the law, I understand it, I've sought counsel on the law, I know what I'm talking about.
I didn't say...
And it gives, it gives us options. And one of the options is to have an elec, a special election on the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November, it would be completely in compliance with the law. And if you're suggesting otherwise, I'd suggest you read the law.
We also discussed, we also discussed, wait, Director Sorkin, I'm speaking. We also discussed that this would be a money saver for the district.
Correct.
We didn't have to do it on our own if we could piggyback on another. I think that as we are stewards of public funds for education, it's really important for us to consider that huge aspect.
And Matt, I wasn't questioning you on what...
Nope, we're not going to speak directly to other directors, please. Unless you've got more discussion regarding the motion.
Stacy, Matt spoke directly to me.
No, no, no. Director Sorkin, we're not, we're not doing this.
Matt, Stacy, you are out of order. You are out of order. He spoke directly...
Nope, nope, Director Sorkin, I'm ending discussion right now and I will, I will put you on mute if you can't stop yourself.
You are a censor.
Will you move... Nope. As soon as you can stop, I'll take a roll call vote and we can move on.
Matt, if you have something and I need to...
Director Sorkin, I am asking you not to directly address another board member in that fashion. If you have additional discussion on the agenda, on the motion?
I do.
You can talk, but we're not going to address any of the board members directly. You can address me.
Matt, Matt addressed me directly.
Sorkin, done, it's done. I'm taking a roll call vote. Director Reardon?
I just, oh, you're going to do the roll call?
You were going to vote.
Yes.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Tamero? Director Schoberg?
Yes.
Director Yuhon? Director Sorkin?
No, Stacy, you are a censor. You are completely...
You are out of order, Director Sorkin. Motion passes seven to one. Agenda item 9.4...
She, she didn't vote, so...
She, I thought she said she...
She said no.
Oh, definitely. I thought she said...
I don't think she said anything, I just said something about...
I heard a no.
Oh, okay.
Agenda item 9.4 is consider resolution accepting monetary property, goods or services. And the resolution in the agenda was again on the donation of $40,000 from William Kersey. And I would entertain a motion accepting that with...
Don't move.
Oh, I wanted to.
Oh, go ahead.
It was the Gilbert guy.
Go ahead. Gilbert guy do it, yeah. I'll move on it.
I'll support it.
Motion by Director Addy, support by Director Yuhon. Any discussion on that?
Thank them very much.
Yes.
Thank them immensely for their generous donation.
And in that, I'm just going to remind everybody not to leave right after the meeting because there are things to sign, including thank you letters, so make sure that gets done before you leave. I will take a roll call vote on this and I would just note for the record that it appears that Director Sorkin has left the meeting. Director Yuhon?
Yes.
Director Schoberg?
Yes.
Director Tamero? Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Reardon?
Yes.
And Director Sunquist is a yes. Motion passes seven to zero. And I probably should have done this earlier when we had Mr. Knutson on to do the audit, but I would entertain a motion to approve the audit report.
I'll move.
Support.
Motion by Director Addy, support by Director Anderson. Any additional discussion? All right, Director Reardon?
Yes.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Yuhon?
Yes.
Director Schoberg?
Yes.
Director Tamero?
Yes.
Director Addy?
Yes.
And Director Sunquist is a yes. On the agenda is, agenda item number 10, third and final reading of the policies noted. Policy 404, 503, 506, 607, 613, 616, 618, 620, 623, and 714.
Don't move to pass them all. Support.
Motion by Director Reardon, support by Director Anderson. Any additional discussion? All right, Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Reardon? Director Tamero? Director Schoberg?
Yes.
Director Yuhon?
Yes.
Director Sunquist, motion passes seven to zero. Anything under unfinished business? Nothing under meeting and...
I don't know if this is unfinished business, but I've got just a comment. I don't see any comments. Perusing some of the literature this afternoon, Governor Walz proclaimed this Paris Week the state of Minnesota and I think we should recognize our Paris, at least by voice. They do a great job for us, they work hard. Thank you for what you do.
Excellent point, Director Anderson. Thank you. Meeting announcements, the next regular meeting is February 8th, 2021, at 6 o'clock here at the Spectrum Health Building and of course, accessible online as well.
I have an announcement as well.
Okay.
Okay, on Wednesday, February 3rd at 6:00 PM in the city council chambers in Gilbert, there will be a meeting in regards to the city taking, looking into repurposing the Gilbert campus. It'll be available and, I mean, it'll be in the...
Newspaper and June instructions.
For the phone number in the newspaper as well. I will be there representing the...
City of Gilbert.
Not city, I mean the school, I'll be there as a, I'll be there, I'll have three different hats. I'll have a, I'll be there as a school board member, I'll be there as a liaison to the, from the, from the school and I'll be, also be there as a, a possible representative on their committee to repurpose this. They've asked me to join their group to look into this. It's really kind of like, got to be careful which hat I wear, huh?
Double dipping.
February 3rd.
Uh, February 3rd at 6:00 PM in the, in the city council chambers in Gilbert. That's on the main meeting.
Keep an eye on him.
You can't collect three Purdy on this.
No, no. I'm working for free.
All right, unless anyone else has any announcements, I would entertain a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting.
Don't move.
Support.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.